Any comments on the agenda from December the 21st, 2020?
I don't have anything.
Lori?
Um, no, but just, I was not at that meeting. Because that was the condo special meeting.
Okay. Carol, do you have anything?
No, I didn't have any comments.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of 12:25.
Do I have a second?
12:21, and I'll second.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, all those in favor? Carol?
Yes.
Chaz?
Chaz Sexton Duranian, yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Lance, yes. All right, our first public hearing is at 6:45, so let's see, is there anything? Do we have any update from the master plan committee?
No, in fact, they've been trying to find out when their next meeting is, so that can be arranged. I'm waiting.
Okay.
Have we received any documents, Beth, from them at all?
Nothing, no.
Well, I mean, nothing additional, as opposed, I mean, we have received documents.
The last receipt was the draft water department document that was shared.
All right, 3.2, draft scenic roads bylaw proposal. The only update that I want to give to the group is that I discussed this with Adam today. And, you know, currently, the scenic roads bylaw can protect stone walls that are within the public, within the public right of way. Going beyond the public right of way, there's no statutory reason that, unless someone can come up with one, that he feels that that can be imposed. There are towns that have regulations for tree cutting, so that if you're cutting down trees on your property, you have to get a special permit, and the rationale for that is that trees, you know, provide for the health and the well-being of citizens because of erosion control or water control, or it has reasons for for public health and public wellness. I can't come up with, unless one of you can, a reason why we would want to extend the, you know, distance from from a public way for stone wall removal that is of a public health or wellness. So I'm just proposing that, and I've said it to you before, is to have Adam review the Shirley, you know, a bylaw very similar to the Shirley bylaw, that is more specific than the vague one that we currently have.
Okay.
I thought it was Ashby, or was it?
It was Ashby. Did I say Shirley? That's because I'm exhausted. Yeah, Shirley.
Okay.
Does that sound like a good plan moving forward?
I agree with that.
Okay. I mean, I was even going to get out there and start measuring from centers of roads and how far is this or how far is that, but I wanted to talk to Adam first.
Yeah. So what he's saying is, is what, because I had had that asked that question, from the center of the road to, I forget what it was, 20 feet?
It's really, and he corrected me there, it's really not that even, because the public way is only measured from the center of the road when it is not documented in a in a plan. So even though that there's a public way, the road doesn't have to be in the center. It can be to one side or the other side.
Okay.
Which I didn't know.
Good to know.
Yeah, and I think our bylaw basically has in it, or it has in it, that is, when the, you can't determine the the public way, it's so many feet from one side to the other, from the center of the road. All right, 6:36, I'm looking at what we can get done here to be as efficient as possible. Okay, why don't I just throw this out for everyone? 3.3, on the DLTA MRPC grant work Townsend's draft age restricting housing development zoning bylaw, and I see that Chris is on board. My thought process, and I'll share it with you, is that I think trying to get any 55-plus age restricted bylaw on any parcel that is less than five acres is going to be very, very difficult because of the discriminatory aspects of it. That said, I think that we have many properties that currently cannot be developed, such as hammerhead lots, you know, where you don't have adequate frontage, which that we could make those by adopting a bylaw change, so that they could be developed for 55-plus. And then also, looking at the density requirements of multifamily homes, and making those so that they could be developed on five-laker lots with more density than what our our current bylaw has. Those are my thoughts.
What did you say for the the last part that you said?
So currently, if we want to develop a multifamily home, I think that you have to have a minimum of eight acres.
Yeah, six, something like that.
Yeah, my thought would be, is make it so that for 55-plus developments, that it could be five acres.
And what would be the density allowed?
Well, we, I mean, we would, we can, I, you know, we, I would say that we, you know, increase the density to whatever is permissible with by the, you know, Health Department. I think that would be the determining factor, but what I'm trying to do is to encourage 55-plus, trying to provide, you know, where people can develop it where they wouldn't be able to develop it for single-family residences.
Okay.
That's my thought process, and that's, you know, it would it would provide more homes in Townsend, but they, you know, these, this addition would be 55-plus.
Okay. I think that's an offering of trying to make the opportunity to increase some housing and still have, and still service, well, the option to service a segment of the population that's really not being serviced now.
And I think it also provides an incentive to developers, where here they had property that they couldn't develop, and now they can.
Yeah, I like it, Lance.
I do.
The hammerhead lot situation, how did you, how did you phrase that?
You know, basically, where if I had, let's just say, 10 acres, just for the sake of argument, but I only had 50 feet of frontage, you know, allow that for, you know, development where it couldn't be developed now, but it'd be restricted to 55-plus. Go ahead, Chaz.
Would it, would it, I, I think it's a fabulous alternative to our way of what we've been thinking about. I think that's a, that's a thinking out of the box kind of thing. My question, though, it would be, so the restriction would be only for the age restricted? I mean, the reduction of the frontage would only be for age restricted housing?
Correct, and it's going to have to be for for parcels that are five acres or greater.
Okay. And then per the the Board of Health approval?
Yep.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a really good, that's a really good avenue to pursue.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I, um, so I thought you were saying two different things. So in other words, not all hammerhead lots are five acres or more. So I thought that you had separated the five-acre parcels for the age restricted, and that the hammerhead lots, I didn't, I didn't realize that you put the five acres minimum on the hammerhead lot.
Yeah, you, we have to, because if we don't, then we will have, have, fall under the federal and state laws on discrimination.
Yep.
Oh, okay. So I must, I must be too tired, too, because I'm, I'm missing something.
All right, so currently, when we looked at our last proposal, Adam had basically commented on it, where any lot that is less than five acres is subject to discrimination. So in other words, we would have to offer, say, a four-acre lot for everyone. We can't, we cannot minimize four-acre lots to just 55-plus.
Okay, but you, so in other words, anybody can build on a five-acre lot, but only on a five-acre lot can it be age restricted, 55 and over? Or can it be, nor can it be, or can it be, oh, God, multifamily? Are you saying that these can only be, so whether it's a multifamily, say, somebody just wants to put up a two- or four-family house, and it, and the Board of Health allows that, are you saying it can only be 55 and over?
Correct.
In a hammerhead situation, yes, with a reduction of the frontage.
Okay, so with the reduction of the frontage, hammerhead, reduction of frontage. Okay, so you're basic, so you're just, I'm thinking in my mind that you're talking about two different kinds of lots, but you're not.
Well, no, I am, I am. I'm talking about hammerhead, and I'm also taught, because we have, you know, rules that you cannot, you know, if you don't have the frontage, you can't put a house there.
Right.
So I'm just relaxing that for 55-plus, for five-acre lots.
And that's not considered discriminatory?
No, if it's more than five acres, it's not.
But you're only allowing it, I mean, if somebody wanted to come in and had five acres, or six acres, or whatever?
Yep.
And they just wanted to put up a two- or three-family house on that. You're saying it would only be allowed if it was 55 and over?
Correct. If it doesn't have the frontage.
If it doesn't have the frontage. So I'm still not seeing how that's not discriminatory, because you're...
No, no, the discrimination is federal law. You cannot discriminate against 55-plus, you know?
Oh, you can't discriminate against 55-plus?
You can't discriminate with people that, say, are 20 years old. You can't allow 55-plus people to have, you know, houses on an acre of land with, 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 you know, regardless. You have to look at, read the comments that Adam put in the last, his red lines.
Okay, all right.
Probably the best thing to do.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry that I took up so much time.
No, no, that's all right.
I'm glad you're looking at something.
Okay, I'm all right, so it's 6:45, and it's time to open up our public hearing with respect to the Squanacook Greenways Site Plan Review Special Permit. And so, Beth, question to you, do we need to have Chaz read into the record the second mandatory referrals?
Yeah, and you can reread the legal notice, if you would.
Okay, I will reread the legal notice. I have to get it first, Beth.
Okay.
Oh, rats. No, no, that's all right.
It should be, it's not, it's...
I just, I just have to get there.
Legal notice, DePoez.
All right, so the legal notice, in accordance with Master in our Law, Chapter 48, you know, paragraph nine and 11, and the Townsend zoning bylaw, Section 14542, Site Plan Review Special Permit, Section 14565, special permits, the Townsend Planning Board will hold a public hearing via Zoom on Monday, January 11th, at 6:45 PM, on the application for Squanacook Greenways Incorporated for the construction of a 12 parking spaces to provide parking for Squanacook Rail Trail at Depot Street, map 51, block 136, lot 1 DCD. You may attend the virtual public hearing on Zoom at, and I'm not going to read the link or the passcode. Materials are available digitally by request, by emailing planning@townsendmas.gov. Parties wishing to speak in favor of or in opposition to the proposal may do so in writing to the hearing or at a hearing in person or represented by an agent or attorney. In answer to parties, parties are encouraged to attend. All right, any questions? All right, so at the, and Stan, are you with us here?
I am.
Aren't they about to start work on your router?
Well, good question. The, the line is in the street, and my neighbors hooked up, and they were told that the line isn't active yet, so. And we're on the schedule, we're on the schedule to hook up, but no word yet. We were, we were on the schedule last week, and they never showed up, so.
Okay.
Comcast woes.
All right, has Beth had a last-minute?
I need all that, so I didn't get that today. Oh, who is IRCCO?
Hey, what's going on? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, let me shut the voice off, then, I'm sorry.
Well, no, we just wanted, Beth wanted, because we need to keep a log of everyone attending the public hearing, your, your contact, your name.
Leo Cormier.
Slower?
Cormier.
Cormier, okay, Cormier?
And your last name?
Cormier, Leo.
Okay, I didn't, I couldn't catch that, Beth, did you?
Leo Cormier.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, he's got it.
Are you going to mute me now?
Um, yep.
Or I can mute myself?
You can mute yourself.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's all right.
We also have Joan Wokowitz with us.
Hi there.
Hi.
All right, has Chaz, has all the planning board members had an opportunity to read Adam's comment on the decision?
The second mandatory referrals need to be read.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, Beth. So Chaz, if you could read the second mandatory referrals, please?
Sure. First one received was on 12/2 of 2020. Second mandatory referral from the Highway Department. My concern is the proposed gravel parking area would be, who's responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the parking lot? Gravel tends to be difficult to maintain with the various weather conditions. Potholes forming, rutting accruing in the spring. Plows digging up the gravel, leaving the lot looking like a mess. I strongly recommend paving the lot with asphalt and line painting parking spaces, including a handicap space. This will be easier to maintain and be much more pleasing to the eye. And that was by James Smith. The second one was also received on 12/2. This one, excuse me, was from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Traffic patterns and flow in this area is a big concern. The need for clear and adequate signage should be carefully considered. Many rail trail users would not be from Townsend and not know that this is a major shortcut around the Main Street traffic light. And those were the two I had, Beth.
Yeah.
I think we discussed both of those at the last meeting. And I believe Bill brought out that the parking lot won't be used in the winter, so there'll be no plowing. And it's, it's going to be privately owned, so there'll be no maintenance for the town. And we talked about putting a sign at the entrance, on the, as you would exit, so it'd be on the, on the right-hand side as you exit, that would say, "Right turn only," because I agree, people that aren't in town may not know that Depot was one way and going in the other direction towards the Townsend House. And I believe we talked about just making that a condition.
Okay, and I, I believe that that condition was elaborated. Correct me if I'm wrong, Beth.
That's in the draft decision.
Yeah, the signage.
Yep.
All right, we've had two other people join, just so you're aware, Beth. Who is user?
I don't know.
There is someone here that has got the name user. Can you identify yourself, please? User?
I don't see a microphone or a camera next to that icon.
Well, you won't see a microphone unless someone's muted. And then we also have, who just joined also?
Eric Chartran.
Yes, okay.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Eric, how are you?
I'm good.
All right, so the user now is connecting to audio.
Okay.
All right, is it all right if I go through Adam's comments on the document? Beth?
Yeah, do you want to screen share it, or?
I don't think I need to screen share it. I'll just, I'll just read it. So this is in particular to the comments that we have on the board finds, on the special permit, that the board finds that the proposal will not have adverse effects, da-da-da-da-da. And we sort of repeat that, you know, it's adequacy in the site, in terms of size, suitability of the site, da-da-da-da-da. So Adam says, case law says that the mere repetition of the statutory criteria, or those contained in the town's bylaw, is not enough to justify the grant of approval. I'd recommend that at the last session of or following the public hearing, the board deliberates on these criteria and add specifics concerning their satisfaction. Did everyone understand that, or do I need to screen share? Do you want to see more, in other words?
He's asking that we substantiate why we would make the decision, right?
Correct. And, and not just merely quoting back bylaw. Any thoughts?
In what section is this?
It's in Section 5. Well, 145665, special permit, I don't know why I said Section 5. Yeah, it should be in Section 5, hold on.
Yeah, it's Section 5 of the decision.
Yeah, it's under findings. Yeah, it's in findings.
Yeah. So what he's saying is that we don't need to generate the, what the bylaw states. The board finds that the proposal will not have adverse effects?
I think that probably, I'm wondering what we need to do with user. User, can you hear me? You're muted now. Who is the person called user? What do you want to do, Beth?
Beth, you're muted.
But I just sent them a chat message to identify themselves. Pardon?
I was doing the same.
Okay. All right, so my thought process here, then, in terms of findings, is that, you know, the rail trail provides a lot of benefit to the town, you know, it gives a much, it's, you know, it gives a much safer access to traverse from, you know, the harbor to, to the center of town. You know, I think it's, it's for, you know, public safety, and for, you know, the, the good of the public. That's my initial thoughts. Yes, Stan?
I think maybe what Adam is saying, and in the past, what's happened is, is the A through G conditions, and I think he's, I think he might be suggesting that you just verbalize each one of those and vote on each one individually. So that, you know, A, the adequacy of the site in terms of the size, blah, blah, blah. Take a roll call, everybody says, "I." Suitability of the site for the proposed use, "I." Impact on, so I think that may be what he's asking for, and that's what's happened in the past.
That makes sense to me.
A comment on each one of those, such as, you know, a finding of fact, if you will, which indicates, yes, you did review the bylaw, and this is how the project fits. So if you wanted to go through those and make a comment, that, that can be added to the decision.
Okay, so do we want to go through those one by one, then? Is that what you're proposing, Stan?
That, that's what I think we've done in the past, that's happened in the past, that's what, that's what we did, if you remember, on the West Townsend Fire Station, we just went through those, whatever, there's seven criteria, and it was just a, you know, a vote, if you will, that said, yes, A, we agree, B, we agree, C, we agree, type of thing.
All right, so, so then we'll go through that. So, so let me ask the board that, for the special permit, is the site, first of all, adequacy of the site in terms of the size for the proposed use? Do I have a motion that we approve that?
I still move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Let's see, I lost people. Okay, Carol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chaz?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Lance, yes. Suitability of the site for the proposed use? Can I have a motion to accept the suitability of the site for the proposed use?
This is Laura Schifrin.
Yes.
That the site is suitable for the proposed use.
Do I have a second?
Second.
How do you vote, Carol?
Yes.
Chaz?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And Lance is yes. Impact on traffic flow and safety? Do I have a motion for the board that we don't see that there's a significant impact on traffic flow and safety?
Make a motion that, so moved.
Carol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chaz?
Yes.
Lori?
I will second that, and I'll vote yes.
And Lance is yes. And we have Bill Wright out joining us. Impact on the neighborhood visual character, including views and vistas, so that we don't see that there's a negative impact to the neighborhood? Do I, can I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Carol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chaz?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Lance, yes. Adequacy of the message, method of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage? I would probably say a motion that that is not applicable because there are no, you know, no restrooms or any water, anything to that effect.
Laura Schifrin, I'll make a motion that this issue is not applicable to the site.
All right, Carol seconds it because she beat, and how do you vote, Carol?
Yes.
Chaz?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And Lance, yes. Adequacy of utilities and other, other public services? I would contend that that's not applicable at all because, well, maybe for public services. So I would say that it's adequate for utilities and other public services.
I'll make a motion that the proposed site is adequate for utilities and proposed services.
Okay, and then lastly, impact on groundwater, surface water quality, and other environmental and natural resource considerations? So can I have a motion that we find that there is no impact on, or, or there's no significant impact on ground and surface water quality and other environmental and natural resource considerations?
Are we going to do a second and a vote on the one that I made before this?
Oh, did I, did I miss it with adequacy of utilization for other public services?
Yeah.
All right, I'm sorry.
I'll second that motion.
All right, Carol?
Yes.
Chaz?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Lance, yes. See what happens when you've been like working since 5:00 AM. All right, so the last one, impact on ground and surface water quality and other environmental and natural resource considerations?
So moved.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
All right, Carol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chaz, how do you vote?
Yes.
Laura, how do you vote?
Yes.
Lance votes yes as well. Okay, so do you think that satisfies Adam, Beth?
Yes.
Okay. Question for the board, do we want to vote on the decision that incorporates our, our, our vote and the changes that Adam's made? Or do we want to wait until it's final and, and do it at a, at a next meeting? Do you have any input on that, Beth, since we start the 14-day clock?
It's ready to go with minor, minor edits. So it, you're, you know, it's up to the board. If you have more deliberation, if you want to add more to the decision, then close the public hearing and you can continue to deliberate and vote at another time.
I just don't want to put you into a pressure cooker of 14 days.
Yeah, well, when, when you vote, that's when it starts the clock.
I know, that's why I'm asking, would you prefer that we continue the public hearing until we have a final decision to review, or vote on it?
Could I, could I add something?
Yes.
I think time has been of the essence here, and this has been continued a couple of times. So I think it would be prudent to close the public hearing and move this forward, since there's really nothing that I heard in the decision that needs to be deliberated any further.
Mr. Chair, I was just about to ask the same thing. What does it mean to the proposed project? And I, I know we discussed some things tonight that we already discussed in a meeting that couldn't count. So we, we have delayed this issue for the applicant. So, but I, I will acquiesce to Beth.
I am, it's ready to go. It's absolutely ready to go.
All right, so then why don't, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I will so move.
Do I have a second? All right, Carol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chaz, how do you vote?
Yes.
Lori, how do you vote?
Yes, at 7:07 PM.
And, and Lance votes yes. And so then can I have a a motion to approve the decision based upon the, the minor edits that Beth's going to have to make?
I will so move.
All right, Carol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chaz, how do you vote?
Yes.
Laura, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Lance votes yes.
Can you also make a motion to grant the special permit?
I'll make the motion to grant the special permit for this proposal.
I second.
All right, Carol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Beth? Nope, I'm sorry, Chaz?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes, and that's okay to vote after we voted to close the hearing?
Yes, we can do that. Lance, yes. Okay.
Do you also want to designate Lance to, or the chairman to sign the decision? Or are you all able to come in and sign? If you want to, I have a motion that Adam had provided a draft motion if the board would prefer to have Lance sign the decision.
I'm, I'm good with that.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that. And let me just sign that real quick before you close it. I mean, before you move on, sorry. So.
Is that on the COVID now? Is that, is that something that's allowed because of COVID? Or is that something that can be done on any of our decisions?
I'm believing it can be done on any of the decisions, but you want to do it at each particular case? Take each case separately? I don't, you know, we can ask Adam, he should be on later, why? But I know this is, you know, being used more frequently during COVID. So the motion is this, I move that the board approve the site plan special permit for Depot Street rail trail parking area and authorize the chair to sign the decision for filing with the town clerk. That was recommended by town council, so that way that, you know, Lance would sign. So if somebody wants to make that motion.
This is Laura Schifrin, I will make that motion.
And I will second.
All right, Carol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chaz?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And Lance is yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so you can go home, I guess, Dan.
Thank you. I'm mildly interested in what Kevin has to say, so I guess I'll, I'll stay on for, for him in case he, in case I can answer a question for him.
Oh, okay. And we've, are identifying a whole bunch of pro bono work that you can do to help us with some of our grants.
Absolutely.
Sorry, I was muted.
So I know, so our public hearing doesn't start until 7:15. So Bill, do you have any updates from the master plan committee?
Mute myself here.
Yep.
Yes, we had a, we had a meeting scheduled for last week, which some, some problem came up with the, the posting of, so we are trying to reschedule again. I know we've gotten a lot of new material in there, and Kim is coming up with a new version of the complete, you know, of the integrated master plan. We were going to go over that at the meeting, but we haven't rescheduled it after the posting failure, so. So that's, that's all I know.
All right, I'm just sort of waiting till 7:15.
Okay. And thanks for your help, Stan.
You're welcome, thank you.
So Beth, I guess you're going to have to put the person as user.
Hmm, interesting.
Did you say Adam's going to be joining us later?
If he can, yeah, he has a meeting at 7:00. He was, he, he's been invited back for the continuation of the public hearing for the age-restricted bylaw.
Oh, okay.
You also have, did you have an opportunity to review the updated draft? I hope you can take a minute and do that now, if you have time. I have two minutes.
All right, I showed that it's 7:15, so I would like to open the public hearing on the site plan review for 152 North End Road. So why don't we introduce the board members, starting with Carol? Introduce yourself.
Carol Hofstis.
Chaz?
Sexton Duranian.
And Lori?
Laura Schifrin.
And Lance McNally. To start the public hearing, I would like to read the legal notice. In accordance with Master and Law, Chapter 40A, Paragraph 911, the Townsend Zoning Bylaw, Section 145/42, Site Plan Review, Special Permit, Section 14565. Special permits, the Townsend Planning Board will hold a public hearing via Zoom on Monday, January the 11th, 2021, at 7:15 PM. On an application from Kevin Smith for the construction operation of a farm stand, including building and parking for seasonal commercial use on the property located at 152 North End Road, map 51 block 10, lot 0, in the RB District. You may attend the virtual public hearing on Zoom at blah, 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 blah. I'm not going to read the Zoom URL and the meeting ID and the passwords. Materials are available digitally on request by emailing planning@townsendmass.gov. Parties who wish to speak in favor or in opposition of this proposal may do so in writing prior to the hearing or at a hearing in person or represented by an agent or attorney. Interesting parties are encouraged to attend. I just wanted to make one note that the public hearing is for a site plan review and that a special permit is not required for this project on 152 North End Road. Do we have any mandatory referral comments?
Yes.
I have several.
Could we have those read?
I have mandatory referral that came in on January 5th from the Board of Selkman. Selkman Cal's comment was, "I am correct in my understanding that this farm stand opened without the required permits and without all applicable inspections completed, and I would be concerned. I would want the planning board to consider what gets done in these situations in the future." There was a comment on December 14th, 2020, from the fire department, saying, "No comment." On December 15th, 2020, from the water department. It states Townsend Water does not supply North End Road, so we have no concern. On December 14th, 2020, the highway department, James Smith, spoke with building inspector, building inspector, and both agreed driveway had been an existing driveway and no need for permit. Site distances and drainage all look good. On December 14th, 2020, this was from the building department. The building department has no records of inspections occurring at this property. The applicant was asked to provide this, his permit as proof that inspections were completed, but our office has not received this information to date. A determination was also made after consultation with the highway superintendent that a driveway permit is not required because the existing driveway is being utilized." This is from Eric Chartrand, the building commissioner. That was on December 22nd. There was also from the Board of Health. Board of Health was on January 7th. It was sent on memo letterhead from Nishoba Associated Boards of Health. It states, "I reviewed the mandatory referral notice from the planning board office for the above referenced property and offer the following comments on behalf of the Board of Health. The application does not offer enough information for the Board of Health to fully understand how the applicant intends to use the proposed farm stand, i.e., what products do they intend to sell? Will the stand have employees that do not reside on the property, et cetera? So the following covers potential Board of Health-related issues that will need to be addressed by the applicant. Ultimately, the applicant will need to provide the Board of Health with a written narrative of how the farm stand will be utilized, how it will be staffed, if any peripheral activities will be offered at the farm. Bullet point, the proposed use of the building may require the need to install a septic system, meeting the requirements of 310 CMR 15.00 and the Townsend Board of Health Subsurface Sewage Disposal Regulations. However, at this time, not enough information has been provided to make this determination. The proposed use of this building may require the need to have a public water supply system, meeting the requirements of 310 CMR 22.00. However, at this time, not enough information has been provided to make this determination." And the proposed use of the building may require And the proposed use of the building may require the need to obtain a food service permit. However, at this time, not enough information has been provided to make this determination." And that's all I have. Beth, why, needs to read the letter to the, from the Building Commissioner?
That's up to the board. If the board would like to hear it, yeah. It's up to.
Yeah, I'd like to hear it.
Okay. What's that?
Read it into the record.
Okay. This is a letter to the applicant dated October 13th, 2020, regarding the 24 by 48 foot seasonal retail establishment at 152 North End Road, map 38, Block 10, Lot 0. Dear Mr. Smith, you recently reached out to my office to inquire about the need for a restroom at a newly constructed 24 by 48 agricultural building located at 152 North End Road, herein known as the property. According to you, the barn was constructed as a memorial to your late brother, and it was intended to be used privately by your family, but now is also being utilized to replace a farm stand that was originally located on the property. On October 5th, 2020, I was able to meet with you onsite to inspect the property and discuss your concerns. After a review of the property file, file and what was discussed, excuse me, was discussed onsite, I have come to the following determinations. Findings, the property is located in the residential B RB District, Townsend zoning map, zoning by law maps 1 through 12 adopted January 1989. A building permit for a 24 by 48 foot architectural agricultural building was approved by intern Building Commissioner Herbert, Hebert, on November 12th, 2019. Agricultural uses in compliance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, subsection 3, Paragraph 1, are permitted in the residential A and B districts. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40, subsection 3, Paragraph 1, lawful agricultural uses are exempt from the requirement to acquire special permits for use or construction. Townsend Bylaw, Section 145-42, requires the site plan review for any change in use or increase in intensity of use, which would require five or more parking spaces regardless of the number of spaces existing on the premises. The building is currently being utilized on the weekends as a retail establishment to sell goods procured on the farm as well as other goods. Argument, your original permit to construct the accessory agricultural building was reviewed and approved prior to my tenure in Townsend, but a review of the permit application you submitted leads me to believe it was approved as an accessory barn. I was hoping that the field copy of the inspection card would be available onsite, but it was not. You agreed to drop the permit off at the office showing that all applicable inspections of the property were conducted. If your permit was approved, it was done so as an accessory barn to your agricultural use. During my inspection, it was abundantly clear that the building is being utilized for a mercantile use. It contains a counter for transactions, has built-in display cases, pushbars of the main entry doors, fire extinguishers, etc. Your permit application makes no mention and contains no information that this building was to be utilized to sell merchandise. Therefore, I would consider this to be a change in occupancy as defined by the building code. A change in the use of the building or a portion of a building, a change in occupancy shall include any change in occupancy classification, any change from one group to another group with an occupancy classification, or any change in use within a group for a specific occupancy classifications. There are a couple of factors that need to be considered when in charge, when in change, when a change is made from a utility group to a mercantile group. Utilities structures are typically accessory to another building or structure and are not usually considered to be habitable or occupiable, and therefore, many code provisions do not apply or need to be enforced. Structures housing accessory equipment do not intend to have an occupancy except for servicing and maintaining equipment within the structure. A mercantile structure, on the other hand, typically involves the display and sale of merchandise, which may be combustible and often attract large crowds. To their credit, the occupants are typically alert, mobile, and able to respond in an emergency situation, alleviating some risks to life safety. The goods on display are available to the public, unlike the utility building. Therefore, you are required to comply with the applicable provisions of 521 CMR, as stated by the Architectural Access Board for your use. During my inspection, I noted several violations of 521 CMR, including but not limited to the height of the counter. The accessible parking space was not delineated as a van space. The parking space surface is not smooth, and the signage throughout that space was not accessible. Due to the fact that a site plan review was not conducted and required, the required number of parking spaces was never determined. Therefore, the required number of accessible spaces cannot be confirmed. You are required to provide at least one accessible van space for up to 14 spaces. As far as the building code, modifications are required in order for occupancy to be granted. Building inspectors are not designers, and therefore, I cannot provide you with a list of requirements or deficiencies. The code allows for different options, and it is the designer's responsibility to indicate which method of compliance they plan on utilizing. My job as a code official is to review the information submitted to ascertain code compliance. My best advice to you is to hire a registered design professional to provide a code evaluation of the space and submit it to my office for review. That said, the following deficiencies were noted during my inspection. A lack of exit signs, accessible sign for the accessible route, and emergency lights, fire extinguishers that are not on approved hangers and did not have signage, the stairs on the mezzanine have rung rise, and the lack of employee bathroom in ordinance with 248 CMR 10, the Massachusetts Plumbing Code. To answer your original question, if you do provide a restroom, restrooms for the public would need to comply with the applicable provisions of 521 CMR. At the time of writing this letter, the Building Department had not received any confirmation that any part of this building was inspected. If inspections are not completed on the, or the permit card was lost, you will be required to provide additional testing and documentation to the Building Department at your own expense. Conclusion, in order for you to be able to legally occupy this building, you will need to be granted an occupancy certificate for use as a retail establishment. It is my determination that the following items need to be completed and/or conducted and approved before a certificate will be issued. You are required to apply for a site plan review from the Planning Board because you have changed your use in ordinance with, in accordance with Town, Townsend Bylaw, Section 145-42B, which states in part, "Any change in use or increase in intensity of use would, which would require five or more parking spaces regardless of the number of parking spaces existing on premises shall only permitted, depermitted upon the issuance of a special permit from the special permit granting authority for the site plan review. If and when you are granted approval for your site plan, that approval shall be submitted to the Building Department for review. You are required to provide the Building Department with your permit card showing that all applicable inspections have been completed, including your foundation and frame inspection, 780 CMR 110.3.1 through 110.3.4 and 110.3.10. You are required to amend your permit, including the submission of plans showing the changes that have occurred or are required for occupancy of a mercantile use, 780, Section 107.4. You are not required to have these plans prepared by a registered designer, but it is highly suggested. In conclusion, therefore, let this letter be written notification that until I have received confirmation that this building was inspected, you are not permitted to occupy the structure. You do not have occupancy, and the building shall be considered an unsafe structure, 780 CMR, Section 114. When I receive confirmation that this building received all of the required inspections to occupy this, the structure in accordance with the original plans, I will decide on whether temporary occupancy can be granted until you receive approval for your site plan and finish the necessary additions or modifications to the structure. If you have any questions or concerns regarding this determination, please reach out to me at your earliest convenience. Whoever is aggravated by an interpretation, order, requirement, direction, or failure to act by any person charged with enforcement of the State Building Code may, within 45 days after the service of such notice hereof, may appeal such interpretation, order, requirement, direction, or failure to act to the Building Code Appeals Board. Whoever is aggravated by zoning interpretation, order, requirement, direction, or failure to act by the Building Commissioner may file a notice of appeal to be heard by the Zoning Board of Appeals within 30 days of the receipt of this letter. Respectfully, Eric Chartrend, Commissioner, Building Commissioner.
All right. Thank you, Chaz. That was a lot to read.
And Mr. Chair, what is the date of that letter?
I'll let Chaz see who's got the letter in front of him.
October 13th, 2020.
And anything to this date, except for the, did you get referrals in, other mandatory referrals, or no? Or am I thinking about the last thing we did?
Well, have you read all the mandatory referrals, Chaz?
Yes. I had a mandatory referral started with the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry, you did. Okay. And so that was October, this is January. Do we know if anything has been received since, because that, that letter from the Building Inspector or Code Enforced Officer was October 13th, you said?
Correct.
Okay, so now we're in January. Has anything, three months later, do you know if anything else that has come in?
Yes, Lori. And I'm only aware of, and we should probably restrict it to, is Kevin Smith did file for a site plan review on November the 4th, 2020.
Oh, and we've not answered that, November 4th?
That's what you're doing tonight. That's the public hearing that you're right now.
Okay. I, I think we should set up a site visit for the board.
Well, let me, all right.
During COVID?
No, no, let me, let me just sort of follow this. Do we have any written correspondence from any of others?
No.
Okay. All right. So I guess, and let me sort of give you my thoughts on this, looking at it. So, you know, a site plan review, basically, we need to evaluate things such as parking, and of course, traffic, and we've already had something from the Highway Department, drainage, signage, utilities, lighting. So we need to have an application that allows us to review these items. You know, when is this business going to be open? What are its hours? How many parking spots are there? The only thing that I can see from the special permit is that there's a handicap, handicap spot, and that there's other parking. So in my mind, I think it's in some ways, Lori, premature to do a site walk until we have a complete application.
I agree.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. I just, that's, it's been a long time. So that's why I was asking, has anything else come in during this last three months?
We can only say to the Planning Board. So the Planning Board, correct me if I'm wrong, Beth, have only received the special, the site plan review application from Mr. Smith, as well as mandatory referral comments from other boards.
That's correct. We received, the Planning Board Office received the application and it's duly processed, the public hearing circulated the referrals to town boards and staff, and prepared for the public hearing tonight. So you're opening the public hearing, and that's where you're at right now.
So actually, we should request of the applicant who wanted the site visit done by us, that we need to receive from him first. I would think what the Building Inspector requested.
Well, I think, I don't think the Planning Board, and this is up for discussion, needs to receive all of the items that the Building Inspector cited. We need to receive the information that allows us to complete a site plan review.
Yes.
That's correct.
We don't need, we don't need to see copies of completed inspections, you know, da, 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 da. Just, just what we need to have to be able to do our site plan review.
Well, the, yeah, the items that you mentioned, which were also in his letter.
Along with other things.
Yeah, which seems to require an engineer to make recommendations and to state what he has and what he's looking for from us, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that there is, and correct, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think there's a requirement that a professional engineer does it, but it's certainly advised.
Right, it may behoove him to do that. Okay, well then, Mr. Chair, how do you recommend that we move forward now?
I just wanted to see if Kevin has any comments or something.
Is Kevin on?
Yeah.
He's got to unmute him. Some, can you unmute him?
I can't unmute him.
There you go.
He's unmuted.
Am I unmuted now?
Yeah.
Yes, you are.
I can have Stan Dillis draw up a plan of the parking area and show the handicap spots. I, I wasn't sure that, that, that I had to have it done, to be quite honest with you, but I guess I just read a letter from Beth, just got it this afternoon. I was a little late opening the email that showed that I needed that.
Okay.
So I will get, Stan may still, might actually still be on, so I can, I can talk to him anyways, I'm sure.
Yeah, he's, he's, he's still here. He's muted, of course, and in, in his nice Lunenburg office.
Well, he's probably relaxing.
Okay.
But I will, I'll, I'll reach out to Stan and do that. I put my, as soon as I got this letter from the Building Inspector, I probably hung myself because I called him up to ask him to come out because I had a couple of questions. I didn't realize that I was doing anything wrong. So I immediately started to address the issues. I went in and saw Beth, I think, within the week, didn't I, Beth? You know, went into the process. It's just because of COVID, it's been such a long time trying to get, to get on the board, you know, to, to.
Understood.
So we will, we will address it. What do you want to continue the?
Yeah, let's just, I would just, I would propose that, so I guess our next meeting is on the 21st?
25th.
25th. Do we want, is that enough time to continue till, or do you think you need additional time?
I, I, probably okay. I just, I would want to check out, reach out to Stan during the day time tomorrow, maybe during business hours, and ask him what his schedule is, if he can accommodate me to do that.
Well, Stan is on right now, so.
Well, I don't know what his schedule is looking like.
I know, but I'm just, any feedback, Stan, in terms of continuing to the 25th?
We can continue to the 25th, and if, I'll have to look at my schedule. If I can't get it done, we'll just ask for continuance of the meeting after that.
Okay.
So can I have? It doesn't seem like the board needs a lot, so I, I may be able to take care of it. We'll see.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else to add? Do you have anything to, to add, Eric?
Sorry about that. Apparently, my mouse died while I was reading. No, not really. It's encouraging to see that Kevin applied right away, and hopefully he can get that information to you guys, and you can make a determination. On my end, it's really hard to tell you if you, if your parking is okay, if I don't know how many spaces you need. I don't know if there's been any changes to the size or anything like that, or any other changes made since the application, because the application was, was a while ago. So if anything like that occurred, just, obviously, you guys will, will fix. So if anything like that occurred, just, obviously, you guys will, will figure it out, and then I'll, I'll review the site plan, and then, then we'll go from there.
Sounds great.
That's really all I have to add.
Okay. So then can I have a motion to continue the, the public hearing until January the 25th at?
7:00 PM.
Can we do it at 6:45?
Uh, we have a, we already have an appointment. The board has an appointment at 6:45.
Okay, then 7 o'clock, that's why you're here, Beth, to make sure.
I'm sorry, 7:30, because we have a seven, there's a 7 o'clock, the cell tower.
Okay. All right, so, uh, motion to continue the public hearing until January the 25th at 7:30, Beth?
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
Carol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chaz, how do you vote?
Yes.
Lori, how do you vote?
Yes.
Lance votes yes. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, um, our next public hearing is at 8 o'clock. All right.
We have, we have Sheri Bean from MRPC with us.
And, and Sheri's going to address?
The Walkability Study, the UPWP project.
Okay, um, which is 3.6, so that we don't totally destroy Sheri's Monday evening, why don't we jump to 3.6? All right. So do you want to sort of provide an update in terms of the Townsend Walkability Study, Sheri?
Um, yes, I know I had shared with Beth later today, probably past business hours, an updated points of interest map for you, based on your comments from your last meeting regarding the Walkability Study, and I know you had requested some open space type things to be added onto the map. So we had done our best based on what our current knowledge is of the area, but we don't have addresses for a lot of the items. Not sure if you were sent the map, but we had added the parcels of open space, we had added the formal trails that we have in our database, as well as, um, maybe one or two locations for, um, like recreating. What I'm looking for tonight, if possible, is to just establish where the study area will be. I know there's been a lot of talk about potentially using the, where the public safety building is, the library up in the northern, um, port part of town, up and, like, to connect that to the center, or there was also talk about the center connected out to the, the high school, to the, the eastern side, along the rail trail, follows the rail trail in 119. I just kind of wanted to figure out, you know, the study area, where you're hoping to, to have that, and then we can move forward in the data collection process.
Lance, did you want to screenshot the map, or?
I can.
Okay.
Are you there, Hartley? Okay, can you allow me to be co-host so that I can share my screen? Is it, um, oh, there, I see it. I didn't.
Update, yeah, we update one. Wait a minute.
Is it in the folder?
Oh, I might not have, let me, let me.
I don't think you did.
No, I think that's the old one, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, I can put it in real quick.
No, I can, um, you sent it out, correct?
I'll send it to you in an email. Yeah. There, uh, here it is, I'll send it via email. Must have got interrupted. There we go. So that's given to you in an email, Lance, from Sheri.
Okay, I don't have it yet. Whoops, I think I just got it.
Well, to point out that the map is going to look pretty cluttered, because it's including a lot of things currently. Until you zoom in to a potential study area, it's going to look a little, a little crazy. But once we establish the study area, it'll be zoomed to that extent, and then it will look a lot less. But that map is just to determine the study area, it's not necessarily going to be used for the study per se. Just to point that out real quick.
Yeah, this is, um, whoops, darn it. I hate it sometimes when I have, hold the mouse the wrong way, that it ends up rotating the whole page. I was trying to get zoomed in a little bit, so that this is, at least make some. All right. All right, am I sharing my screen?
Yep.
Yes.
So I guess, and Chaz, can you comment at all in terms of the priority? In other words, the walkability to the, um, you know, um, library versus walkability to, um, you know, sort of connecting the high school with downtown?
Well, there's, there, there's two factors that I think are going on here, and this, this is just my thoughts on the matter. Um, we, we are, um, really kind of concentrating on two different things. Number one, the walkability, but there's also the safe routes to school, which can be in conjunction with this as well. And connecting the, um, the Atwood Acres and Townsend Woods with the senior center, along with the middle school that's out there, I think would be very advantageous for us with this grant, to kind of bring the northern, um, this northern sector back down to downtown so that we have connectability. I'm also, um, feeling that with the downtown and with the rail trail being as, as far advanced as it is, to, to concentrate on this area for this particular study, and then we can look for, uh, other areas, um, as we, as we move down the line. But I think this downtown area is really kind of vital right now, at least that's, that's just my thoughts.
And I probably would add that, um, and I don't know, Sheri, were you on the call that, um, that we had on January the 7th?
I wasn't, but I had listened to a recording of it afterwards.
Okay, so, you know, in terms of the next step, um, Veronica Kell is going to be, in fact, she's in the process of setting them up right now, working groups for all of these grants. And I think that we, as the planning board, should not get ahead of that. You know, we part, participate in it, but that includes other board members from other committees within Townsend, and I think that, that's probably the group that we should probably take for direction. At least that's my thought. Any other board members comment on that?
No, I, I agree, because these all tie in together quite nicely, as a matter of fact.
Yeah. I know that doesn't help you, Sheri, but.
Well, the good news is it's winter time, so the, the data collection process usually starts in the, more in the spring.
Okay.
And we will be looking to do some kind of a walking audit, might be challenging, given COVID lately, but, um, we're going to try to do some kind of creative, smaller walking groups where we can still be distanced, but it will involve a, a walk in a portion, at least, of the study area where we're going to invite the public to come somehow. Maybe we'll do multiple walks and make them smaller groups. I'm not really quite sure how it's going to work, we'll have to be creative in that, but it's, it's going to be new for everyone this year, because we've done a couple of different walkability studies for three or four other communities, but this one, this year in particular, is going to be very challenging.
Okay.
But once the study area is established, we can zoom, zoom in, and we can see what we have for data already, we can gather what we need to gather, and then we'll do those walking audits, which is really where we gather the most information for the, for the study.
Okay. But I'm sorry, I'm sorry that we couldn't provide you with more information on it, but I do, I do agree with Chaz, as she said, I don't want to get ahead of the subcommittees that were formed to drill down on these.
Okay, so when do you think that the working groups will be established, or have they already been?
I saw emails that came out today, you were copying them, weren't you, Beth?
Yes.
Asking for that and proposed times to meet. So, soon.
Okay, well, just keep me in the loop, and I can attend, you know, a working group meeting if needed. I know Veronica pretty well, so I can touch base with her.
Yeah, she's probably the best source for the logistics, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, okay, we will have, um, a, a smaller potential working group where we involve other town committees, so maybe that could just be the same as whatever working groups you're already doing.
I think that makes sense.
Right, and are you already a Safe Routes to School community? You are, right?
No, we are in the process of, of becoming one.
Okay, perfect, that'll tie in nicely.
That's why I'm kind of pushing that, too.
Yeah, okay, awesome.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, I'll look forward to hearing from you about the working groups, and we can go move from there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, no problem, thank you.
All right, I just stopped sharing. At least I think I did.
Yep.
That was awful to hear about. All right. All right, so I think we're right. So we've done 3.1, we've done 3.2. All right. DLP MRPC grant work for the Townsend Chapter 43D feasibility, 3.4.
Uh, there was a report that came in today, if you, um, you'll, it's in the folder, but you'll, you'll probably haven't had time to review it.
I haven't had time to review it.
Yep, so that's, that's in the folder, so you can.
All right, so I think we probably should punt on that for this evening.
Yep.
It's in process.
Yeah. All right, safe routes to school update, Chaz?
We have, um, I just wanted to touch base with everybody to, to, I, I had, I had received a couple of emails from the general public questioning what the Safe Routes to Schools actually is. And it, it does dovetail with, with what we were just talking about as far as the Safe Routes to School. It not only identifies safe routes for, um, the, the kids to either bike or, or walk to school, but it also has a lot of other programs, um, that are available that, that really work with the police department as well. Number one is they have bike safety, um, uh, classes and groups that they do. There's also, um, uh, some, not seminars, but they, they, they bring kids out to, uh, summer workshops, um, they have bike rodeos, which I think is pretty cool. They have, um, you know, bike inspections. I, I, I grew up in, in Irving, which is out west from here, and we used to belong to, uh, something like this. And, and in the spring, when, when we started on our bikes, we all brought our bikes in, they got inspected to make sure that everything was working right, um, and that every, and we went over the rules, and, and I think that it would be very important for our community to, to do that. There's also evaluations continuing, um, to, to look at surveys and assessments and observations on what would be the, the, the best routes, safest routes for kids to either walk or bike to school. And that really encourages them for the physical education portion of it as well, which I think is important. So I have a, a meeting coming up next week with Rachel from Safe Routes to School, uh, and Veronica has been working with me on this, and, um, I have sent out, um, an email to our, um, uh, school committee members. I, I have not received anything back yet, um, but, uh, I have, um, developed a flyer with, um, Rachel, who is, uh, the Safe Routes to School representative. And, um, basically, uh, I, I'd like to send it out to the community, um, to, I, I'd like to post it on social media, actually, to let, A, let people know that this isn't, uh, something that we're interested in, and B, if they want to help volunteer to help us move forward with it, especially, um, talking to anybody who's a crossing guard or anybody who is affiliated with anything to do with a school, uh, to safely get the kids to and from school, um, to contact myself or Veronica so that we can move forward on this. Basically, we still need buy-in from the school, and I haven't heard anything, because I'm sure they're very busy in regards to, uh, where their curriculums are, as far as the, um, the, the COVID situation that we're at. And that's really all I have for right now, but I would like to know, um, would it be okay if I did submit the, um, the flyer that was developed, uh, to put it on a couple of websites, and then open sharing so that other people can share it as well?
And then?
Put it, uh, so it's been put on the website, correct, Chaz?
It's been put on the town website, yes.
And you're proposing to put it where?
Put it in social media, put it out to social media.
I guess I have a question, is, does the town have any policies with this?
This is part of the, the 3.7 that I wanted to talk about.
Okay.
Did you want me just to go into that?
Why don't we go right into that?
Okay. The, um, the Selectmen had, um, put out a social media policy, um, that outlines, um, what the town, um, what the town has, uh, for a social media policy. This was dated 7/8/2019. Basically, what this basically says is that, um, as long as it conforms to these specifications, then it's okay for us to post, as long as we're not taking a position. There is no, uh, there's no, it doesn't say anything in the social media policy that we need to get permission per se from anybody, as long as, um, it follows along the guidelines that, that this, um, policy states. The only time that it says that, you know, that anybody, as far as, you know, um, uh, the town administrator or anybody, is if there's a violation of that, which is means that if somebody's putting out their own personal opinion or anything. The flyer that was developed by the Safe Routes to School is also, um, part and parcel on the, the state website, so it, it does conform to, you know, what the state feels is safe, um, and I, the, the, I don't see any, any issues with, uh, there are some pictures there, but the pictures have been approved by the person, um, that had taken the pictures, and the individuals have given permission to use, um, to use those pictures in advertisements, so I'm, I don't see that we're infringing upon anything there as well.
Dan?
Beth?
There is another policy in your folders. It's called media relations policy. If you want to look through that, there's a section in there that says, "Members of boards and committees. The chairperson of an appointed town board or committee shall be the primary interface to provide all information to the public on behalf of the board or committee, i.e., represent the board or committee in stating board or committee positions. Each board or committee member shall recognize that it is the responsibility of the board or committee chairperson to speak for and on behalf of the board or committee. Any board or committee member may speak on behalf of the board or committee on a specific subject, as long as he or she received permission from the board or committee chairperson." That being said, each board or committee member has the right to speak on his or her own behalf, as long as she, she or he clearly identifies that is the case in any communications that are intended to be released to the public. So in that case, I think that it would probably, it sounds like it would have to be approved by the chair. That's how I read it?
Yep, that's how I read it, too.
Um, do you see any other sections in that policy that are applicable?
And that's what I would be asking for approval for that.
Yes?
Okay. I didn't know if you were hearing me or not. Um, I just wanted to add, I, I mean, I would be agreeable or in favor of something that Chaz put out because he tends to be very detailed and really follows the rules. So I, I wouldn't have an issue with that. I've not seen what's on the website right as of now. Um, but I just wanted to say for a little bit of history for the rest of the board, if you didn't know, many years ago, the police department had that kind of, um, rapport with the schools and the students. They used to do bike inspections and they would have, um, helmet, uh, instructions and helping the kids do that. And then they used to tie it in with the ice cream factory and give each kid that had a helmet, you know, that they caught, got an, uh, ice cream coupon. So, um, I think the other thing I wanted to say was I think it's interesting that they use the term safe. Um, and I go, and I know it's much bigger than what my comments are, but I know that in, in my industry as a Realtor, I can't say safe streets or safe neighborhood or safe town because there's a liability involved, um, in reference to my license. So I find it very interesting that this, although we know what the intent is, um, that this was named at such a, on such a large scale. So just pointing that out, that I find it interesting.
Um, gosh, um, back in my, when I, you know, prior life, um, we used to always have, you know, someone from Media Relations that would review all postings for conformance. And if I was to post anything that didn't go through that in behalf of the corporation, I would be fired. Um, of course, um, you know, I have no problem with, with, um, with that, Chaz. Um, the worst case scenario is I could be fired from the planning board.
I don't think that would happen, Lance.
Oh, um, anyway, um, uh, we should probably have the board, um, you know, why don't you make a motion that you, you motion that, um, um, you know, allowing for the posting of, of, uh, material and social media that conforms with the town's requirements and has to be approved by the chair?
I would so move.
Um, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Carol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chaz?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And, um, Lance, yes. All right. So we're at eight o'clock. Um, I'd like to open the public hearing for age, uh, hold on a second, let me get the agenda. I'd like to open the, the public hearing for the, um, Age Restricted Development Zoning Amendment Bylaw Proposal. Um, let's introduce the board members. Carol, can you introduce yourself?
Carol Hofstas.
Chaz?
Chaz Sexton Duranian.
Laura?
Laura Shiffrin.
And Lance McNally. Um, I also need to announce that Beth has a sign up sheet. So, um, so in addition to the board, we have, uh, Chris with us as well as Hartley. Um, and so let me try to, did I miss someone? No. All right. Um, in accordance with the provisions, Matt General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5 and 11, zoning bylaw, Article 12, Section 14569, the Townsend Planning Board will continue a public hearing remotely on January 11th at 8:00 PM to review a proposed zoning bylaw as follows. Age Restricted Development Zoning Bylaw Parties, parties wishing to speak in support or in opposition to these amendments may do so in writing prior to the hearing or in hearing in personal or represented by an agent or attorney. Copies of the Age Restricted Development Zoning Bylaw Proposal are available for review in the offices of the town clerk and land use during business hours, blah, blah, blah. Respectfully submitted. Um, all right. Do we have any mandatory referrals?
Um, no, I think we already read this into record, didn't we, Beth?
Things.
So, no.
So what you have is an updated draft that was, um, submitted by, um, MRPC.
Yep. All right. So, um, and we didn't discuss this at all, Chris, so you may be surprised. So, you know, and I, I could only, I had quickly reviewed the draft, but, um, the thought, that process that I had is, I mean, how does this draft, um, get around the discrimination of five acres or less? You're muted, Chris.
Yeah, sorry. I had to hit the mute button. Uh, basically, I reverted back. So my suggestion, um, and I know there's a lot of notes there, there's a lot of back and forth, um, responding to some of the things the lawyer, uh, pointed out. Um, my suggestion was to simply remove the, um, how the age restriction, um, revert back to the way that was with, um, Milton. I mean, you would still have housing that was developed with 55 plus, you know, individuals in mind, but you would not be able to age restrict it. Um, I was also here earlier in the, uh, conference, in the, uh, meeting when you were talking about, um, uh, some other ideas to move around that. Um, I took a few notes out. I don't think I had the entire sketch drawn out. Um, but that was my recommendation was basically to, to remove that 55 plus requirement, um, but still require the housing to be built in such a way that it enabled aging in place.
Okay. I guess personally, the concern that I have is that, um, you know, developers try to maximize their profit and I think their profit is not max, maximized with 55 plus developments.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, that's why I had the thought process of taking properties that are five acres or greater and allowing those for 55 plus development where those properties could not normally be developed because they're against our zoning, current zoning bylaws.
Right.
And I think I recall someone saying, but I don't know if this is for sure, but Nantucket has like a bylaw for 55 plus Hammerhead lots.
Mm-hmm.
But I haven't looked into that. Um, I mean, what I can do is I can clearly take a stab at, um, you know, some thoughts about the bylaw for your incorporation. Now, how long are you with us till?
That was the, um, other note I was going to make a shot on Beth, an email, um, I think after our last meeting. But technically speaking, the DLTA funding lapsed at the end of the past calendar year. Uh, I'm working under an EDA grant, so we used a little money from that to just sort of close this out and bring it to this meeting.
Okay.
Um, but as of that grant, I'm taking a step back after this. Of course, you're welcome to apply for further DLTA funding, um, in the year ahead, should you wish to.
Okay. I really appreciate the effort that you've put into this, Chris.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And it's been a pleasure working with you as well.
Okay. Um, I don't know. Any other comments from any other board members? I mean, I can put a sort of a draft together and some of the bullet points on, um, what we could do.
Um, Lance, in, in, in your, your comment, um, and then having a, a little bit of chance to, to, to think about this, I, I do remember talking with, um, I'm, I'm not sure if it was Nantucket, but it was definitely on the Cape, um, where it was, uh, it was an old drive-in type situation, uh, and, and they were able to, um, make exceptions to be able to develop that with the same, that Hammerhead type, um, thought, process involved in it. Um, so there has been other developments per se that have, have utilized that particular, um, idea.
Okay. So I guess I'd be interested in hearing what the board's opinion is, is to, um, move forward with, uh, with, uh, zoning amendment, but really it doesn't, um, it really doesn't, um, it, it basically opens it up to everyone, which I'm concerned about, um, not creating age restricted housing in that case.
Chairman McNally?
Yes.
Uh, town council's doing the meeting, just so you know.
I've seen him. How could I miss Adam?
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Hi, Adam.
Hi, Ian.
And I think I told everyone, I spoke to Adam earlier today about, you know, getting around the discrimination, but still preserving 55 plus by, um, you know, increasing density with multifamilies or, um, Hammerhead lots. And, and those were my thoughts. And I probably need to put more thought into that. Flesh out the details. But I just wanted to see if the board was even sympathetic to that sort of an approach.
I think it's something we should pursue.
And we are.
Mr. Chairman, um, if I may, I did have, uh, one of our planners take a, a very quick cursory glance on this. So,
Yeah.
Adam, I don't know exactly how this meshes with your points regarding the five acres, um, but she did find some language that I, one second, if I could just find the note on here regarding, one second. Uh, here we go. Edit. No, never mind. I'll have to find the note, the, uh, page that the note is on. Um, but one of the planners did find some language that had been used in other bylaws regarding an age restriction. I put that into the notes, just as an alternative. Again, we haven't checked it against any of what Adam mentioned. It was a very quick, you know, um, something she picked up. So that's why I put it in the margins and not in the actual bylaw. Um, but it might be worth taking a look at.
I have your draft up here. What do you mean by in the margins?
Um, do you have the comments on it?
Hold on. No, I don't.
Oh, okay. Yeah. I'm looking, let me see if I can find, uh, it's in the comments somewhere. I'll see if I can't find it and I'll email it to the, uh, to the rest of the board.
Okay.
Let's see. I'm just gonna give myself a little look.
So what would be our next steps, Lance?
Um, I think the next step is to flesh out my thoughts in a little bit more detail.
And, and how would you want to do that? To do a working group or, or?
Um, uh, probably, I think maybe I can put some bullet points together in terms of what the concept is, and then we do it in a working group in our next planning board meeting or the planning board meeting after that.
Okay.
I'm sort of jammed right now. Um, I'm, in fact, I'm swamped with, with stuff, unfortunately.
So would, would that be okay for February?
Yeah, I can do it by then. I mean, hopefully I will dig myself out from what I'm into right now.
Yeah, I'm kind of in the same predicament. Um,
I just put more meat on my thoughts so that we can review it.
So would, do, do you want to, I mean, I, I want to thank Chris for the work that he's done and, and
Yes.
do, do we want to just do a motion to continue this until February?
Um, I would like to, um, and certainly, um, leverage the work that Chris has done to the further, you know, the further extent possible.
Mm-hmm.
So when is our meeting in February, Beth?
Uh, let me double check.
I mean, Adam, do you have any comments?
I came in a few minutes late and I apologize. I had a seven o'clock that ran late. So are you discussing the age restricted development bylaw generally, or are you talking about some concept of Hammerhead lots or things like that?
Um, discussing the age restricted, um, in general. And with my thoughts of Hammerhead and, uh, multifamily density changes that would apply to 55 with the objective of, um, being able to encourage development of 55 plus by relaxing zoning laws, um, that would prevent development for everyone.
Right. Um, so, so I'm comfortable. I, I reviewed, um, Beth was kind enough to circulate the updated age restricted development bylaw following the meeting we had in, I guess it was in December.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I reviewed that and I compared that to the version that I had circulated previously with my comments. And I thought it was entirely acceptable. I didn't find uh, even a single edit that I'd make. Everything that I had suggested had been addressed or incorporated. So I thought it, I thought it was, uh, comprehensive and addressed concerns I had relative to potential discrimination because you haven't made the age restriction obligatory. I guess the only, the only comment, if I, if I did have one comment, and this is, this may be intentional. Um, I understand you want to, you want to sort of draw your audience to this bylaw so as to create age restricted housing. You've still called the bylaw the age restricted development bylaw, which is a little bit of a misnomer because it's not age restricted development. You're, you're not requiring that it be restricted. You're, you're encouraging that it be, uh, constructed to such a standard that it would be, uh, that it would appeal to individuals who are 55 plus. You're requiring the architectural standards or design standards be such that it would be appropriate for individuals 55 plus. You're limiting the number of bedrooms, but that's all meant to incentivize, um, uh, the, the development to cater to a certain population, but you're not requiring a restriction. So I will just say that most bylaws I've seen that are structured like this, that are non-obligatory, they call themselves something different, like senior housing bylaw. Um, so, you know, you're, you're encouraging senior housing, but to, to use the term restricted in the title, again, a little bit of a misnomer, but maybe, maybe you don't care. I, I don't foresee that, the use of that title being something that the attorney general uses as a basis to deny the bylaw. I don't think it rises to that level. So maybe you want to leave that title because you want to drive home the point that you really want it to be as restricted as it can be without actually having an age restriction on record.
Right, right.
So it's sort of up to you whether you want the title or not, but I, I did flag that one comment because I said, well, the, the title's the same, but it's really not, it's really not an age restricted development bylaw anymore. It's a, it's a senior housing bylaw.
But how does it encourage, my concern is just, how does, how does it, how does it encourage development?
How does it encourage age restricted development?
Uh, yes.
Uh, in, in numerous sections. So, um, it says in Section B2, an age restricted development is intended for people aged 55 or older. As such, buildings and site improvements in an age restricted development shall provide for guest parking, public meeting areas and universal design in accordance with the provisions of this section.
Yes, but I'm just looking at if I'm a developer, why, what, what incentivizes me to comply with this bylaw?
Well, the, the bylaw is obligatory if you choose to develop the densities that are allowed. So my, my, my guess is the sole driver, um, to incentivize, so, so you and I are maybe talking past each other because we're asking related questions, but different questions. The question I was answering is how does this bylaw, um, result in the creation of housing that is more appropriate for an aging population?
Okay. And I understand that it does.
Yeah. Your question now is, well, okay, but why would a developer ever want to use this? And I think the reason is for the density. You have to provide sufficient enough density as compared to anything else that exists under your zoning bylaw. And somebody says, well, you know, even though I've got to invest additional monies in designing this for an aging population with these enhanced design requirements, even though I'm limited to two bedrooms, even though I've got to find space on the site for guest parking and public meeting areas and the sort of areas I wouldn't have to dedicate in any other kind of development, it's all worth it because I can build at a greater density than, than I'd be able to build anywhere else in, in Townsend. be able to build anywhere else in Townsend.
Okay.
Isn't that what you were talking about, Lance? Basically limiting it to five acres or more in Hammerhead lots with not enough frontage, but this being an opportunity for somebody to be able to develop it?
Yeah, except that, except that the reason that my thought process was to be on lots of five acres or greater was so that one could make it age restricted. One could limit it to 55-plus.
And have more density.
Yeah, I mean, yes, but you could, but I don't think density is an argument here because this provides greater density. It's just that it provides greater density to everyone, not just age restricted.
So are you, are you proposing that, look at me being a counselor and paraphrasing, the, the, if, if we, we had language that says that, you know, to, to decrease the frontage, providing that you had the acreage to support something like this, are you saying that we should add that in order to make it more attractive for developers?
Yes, that's what I'm, that's sort of what I'm proposing is to incentivize a developer, you know, here they have, here they can now purchase property that before they could not develop a home on it. Now they can purchase it and put homes on it for 55-plus.
See, that's kind of my thought, too.
I mean, what I don't understand, I mean, what I don't understand is, is the incentives in here enough to have developers develop units that meet these requirements? That's what I don't, you know, I don't know if I understand that or I know that.
This is Carol. Can I ask a question? If you're concerned about developers not wanting to put up a 55 housing, wouldn't they, if there was enough, if they thought there was enough people, 55 or older, that would be interested in buying that kind of housing, wouldn't that be an incentive for a developer to put up? I mean, I was looking, my sister-in-law just moved into this huge development in Bellingham for 55 and older. Westford has a huge 55 and older development. I mean, these developers went in there and did the development because there was a, there was enough need for it or enough interest in it. So I think if Townsend has enough seniors that are interested in that kind of housing, I would think that would be an incentive for a developer to come in and do that.
We definitely have the population for that.
But do we have the money for that? Because you're not talking about affordable housing. You're talking about somebody who can afford a more expensive home for their aging in place.
I mean, my short answer to that is I'm clearly not in, you know, my intuition tells me that commercial entities maximize their profit. And if they feel that they can build a $500,000 home and there's enough of a market out there for people to buy it, they would do that even if there was a, you know, same size of a number of people that want a, a senior residence. They're going to develop where they can maximize their profit.
So to answer Carol's questions, yes, there is a need, Carol, in town. There definitely is a need for this. There's a segment of our population that does not fit into Townsend Woods or to Atwood Acres that would rather have their own property, but not quite as expansive if they're in a larger home. I mean, there's a way-
And even affordability. They would be, they would like to, you know, remain living in Townsend even though that, you know, when they retire, but they can't afford, you know, they need to downsize.
And there's a well over a two-year wait to get into the senior housing here in town.
Yeah.
So are you looking at more affordable senior housing versus like an age of 55 and older development?
I believe affordability is key.
Right, and if you look at what the median, what's out there because of where we're at, what's affordable in some communities is really, I mean, we're at a high end because of our county. You know, so if you look at affordable, our prices are higher in the affordable realm than other communities. Did I say that right? Lori, did I say that right?
Yes, you did.
So we, some people in our community that would consider it an affordable rate is actually higher than other communities.
Okay, I would, I guess I would think, well, I'm only going, because I lived in Westford before I moved here, so moving from Westford to here, it's much more affordable here than in Westford.
Right.
Very true.
And, and, yeah.
But we're not doing, there's nothing connected to this about affordability.
Well, so this is where I'm getting very confused is, is if you're looking at just like, I'm going to tell you, my sister-in-law, I thought she was crazy. She just moved from Holliston, sold her house for like 420, moved into a two-bedroom condo attached unit in Bellingham, age 55 and older, and paid 450 for. So, so she paid more for a two-bedroom house than she sold her nine-room house for.
Yeah, but she probably got brand new and she probably got something aging in place. If you look at what was developed in Shirley, they had a really nice, high-end, 55 and over development that was brand new. And when they started, they started at 350 and they ended up in the 400s, and they were only two-bedroom. They were all good-sized rooms and had garages, you know, but it was stuff more likely for somebody who could afford that. But yet, if you go closer to Boston, the price that they paid for that, they would probably be a million dollars in Lexington or-
Oh, yeah, absolutely. You're right, absolutely. And yes, her condo is gorgeous. It's, you know, two bedrooms, two car garage, and it's, you know, really, it's very pretty. But it is attached.
So let me ask Adam a question here. So is it even, is it feasible to enforce a 55-plus? How would it be enforced?
So this, I mean, this is always an issue, whether it's 55-plus or any other aspect of land use that is unseen. So interior use of property, you know, bedroom restrictions are a good example. So you've got a two-bedroom restriction that you've incorporated in your by law. How does that get enforced in an interior build-out that could potentially be retrofitted with a third bedroom? I get this question often when I'm representing zoning boards and we're approving dense multifamily development, 40B developments, and the question arises, well, you know, you've got two-bedroom units with a loft. How do we know that loft is not going to be enclosed after somebody acquires, purchases the unit to create a third bedroom? So it's always an issue in terms of enforcement. You know, there are points in the process where you can, you can perform inspections to verify compliance, but age restriction is even harder when you're talking about the age of the individuals and somebody may pass on and, you know, who owns the unit. So there are certainly challenges. Enforcement is the most difficult part of any zoning by law, for sure. So it's enforceable, but not with perfection by any means. Age restriction, a lot of it's self-policing.
Okay.
And West Meadow Estates is a perfect example of that. They all had lofts, and, you know, when you go, when they go up for resale, wow, they've got a door, they've got a closet, you know, there's a bed in it. You know, it does happen. It's not every single unit, but people use their space the way they want to once they own it. You know, it's not like there's the police coming to check out how you live in your house.
Okay. All right. Well, again, I've got to, I got to give this some more thought. And, and to be, you know, to put something down, and I may just turn around and say, you know, I agree with what Chris has written, but I have to give this some more thought. Any other comments?
I agree with you, Lance.
I would, I would just say, if, it sounds to me like the concern is that you've got, you've got an age, you've got a senior housing by law without a, without a required restriction. So I think, I think you're saying your fear is that this is going to be used more by everyday developers of housing than by those who intend to develop senior housing?
I think my concern is, my concern here is, is the increased density enough to motivate a builder to build this type of housing as opposed to traditional housing? That's what I don't know.
And if it, if it isn't, what about working the required restriction back in? It's going to bulk up the by law a little bit because you're going to have to work through the governmental standards that we had talked a little bit about at the December meeting.
Yeah.
But it's not much more than a cut and paste. I mean, we're not going to have to reinvent the wheel there, but you could, you could work the mandatory restriction back in. You have to, you have to be mindful of the bedroom count. I mean, so bedroom count restrictions always concern me. I had, I had maybe not articulated this as clearly as I should have at the last meeting, even with a by law like the one you've got now, the draft you've got now, without the mandatory restriction on age. The bedroom count restriction still concerns me. There's still, there's still, there are still attorney generals' opinions out there and reviewing municipal bylaws that suggest that when you start limiting bedroom count, there's potential discrimination against families there. So that concerns me, whether the housing is age restricted or not, whether the housing is affordable or not. Most of the case law that exists or the directly on point attorney general's opinions exist in other contexts, so affordable housing specifically, but it's still a concern. So I would recommend that you open the bedroom count restriction if you're going to work in the 55-plus restriction, but I think that sort of works itself out. If you've got 55-plus housing, you're probably not really going to be too concerned with three and four-bedroom units.
Agreed.
And I mean, is it, Adam, is it, is it practical to, how difficult is it to work around the 55-plus discrimination issue?
I think I could take a crack at it. I can, I can take a look at what you've got here and make some suggestions. I mean, I think it can be worked around. It's, it's going to, it's going to bulk up the by law a little bit because you want to work in some of the provisions that address state and federal standards so that they're in there, some of which can be incorporated by reference. So it's going to, it's going to make the by law somewhat lengthy, but not impossible. Plenty of towns have done it.
And, and from a practicality standpoint, is the hoops that one has to jump through to avoid discrimination, is that difficult logistically?
I don't think so. It certainly hasn't stopped developers from developing 55-plus housing. I mean, it's, you've just heard of several examples of projects that exist just in the vicinity of Townsend, so.
Okay. All right. I apologize for not being better prepared, but I have to put some, some more thought in this. So with that, is it all right to continue this until our February meeting? And what time do we have, Beth?
The February meetings are February 8th and February 22nd, and there's nothing on the agenda yet.
All right, so why don't we continue this till February the 8th at 6:45?
Okay.
Can I have a motion to that effect?
Still moved.
I'll second it.
Carol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chaz?
Yes.
Lori? Lori?
Lori, yes.
All right, Lance, yes. Okay. Thank you so much, Adam, for your support with this.
You're welcome. Good to see you all. Happy New Year.
Yeah, and once again, thank you, Chris, for your efforts.
Absolutely, thank you, and just echoing Adam, Happy New Year.
All right, Happy New Year, even though I want to start it over. All right. Okay, let me get back to our agenda. All right, I think we've gotten, I think we've gotten through the work session. Do you agree, Beth?
I think so.
All right, so correspondence, votes, notices from other towns.
Oh, there you go.
More reading.
Or you could just read it to yourself and then just paraphrase it.
There, some of this had already gone past. Beth, am I just putting this out for, to be on record? Is that all it is?
You talking about the notice from other towns or?
Yeah.
The notices from other towns, you don't have to read them. I mean, I can email them to the board and they're in the folder. It's entirely up to you. It doesn't have to be on the record.
You know, I think that since she's got them up on the forward, why don't we just have the board, the board reads them? I don't, unless people liked, likes to hear Chaz speak or if Chaz wants to speak, either one.
I was wondering how you were going to phrase that.
Yeah, I think that for just, you know, now and moving forward, the board can just review it, and if they have any questions, bring them up here. Does that sound like a good process change?
Yes.
Okay, so we have it in our folder, and with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, did you want to read, there was some correspondence from the Board of Selectmen that should probably be read.
Okay, I'm sorry.
There was, on December 18th, 2020, there was a letter to confirm that the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board held on Tuesday, December 15th unanimously voted to appoint Carol Hofstis to the Townsend Planning Board and ordinance with Chapter 3-1 F1 effective December 15th, 2020. There was also, from the Board of Selectmen, a memo outlining all of the holidays, the official holidays for the upcoming year. And there's also a memo that it's time to start preparing for the annual town report and the annual report for fiscal, for 2000, for 2020 is due, but also last year, 2019. Now, didn't we vote, Beth, last year? You had already completed 2019, I thought. for 2020 is due, but also last year, 2019. Now, didn't we vote, Beth, last year? You had already completed 2019, I thought.
Yeah, that was complete and submitted. It's, it's in their file.
Okay, so it's just 2020 that we, that they're asking for. And they're looking for those until later than Friday, February 26th. And that's all I pulled off unless I missed anything.
Yep, that's it.
Okay. And I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All right. Carol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chaz?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
All right, Lance, yes. Okay, thank you.